Welcome everyone that's here in our chamber office and we welcome all those who are watching out there in TV land. So to start with, I've asked Councilman Argal to give us an opening prayer.
Our dear Father in heaven, we are grateful this evening as we meet here as City Council and entertain the citizens of this good city of Spanish Fork. We invite thy Spirit to this meeting, that as we conduct the business, that we may do so in a pleasing manner, that we conduct ourselves accordingly. We are grateful for this wonderful city that we are a part of and for this land, and we ask the blessing upon this city as we go forth, and we ask these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I'll also ask Councilman Gordon to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
For the audience, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to, we have a special presentation by Mountain View Hospital, so those representatives would like to come up, we'll let you just take care of that right now.
Hi, I'm Karina Fisher. I'm the director of the ER, and we're pleased and happy to be here tonight to recognize some very special people in your city. I'm going to turn the time over to trauma coordinator Chris Shields.
No, you just look right here because we have cameras here, but so, yeah, hey, you're on live TV, yeah, so don't screw up.
This is a lot different. I'm from Fillmore, this is not like Fillmore.
Oh, yeah, well, no, it's not. So you just face us and everything will be just fine.
Okay, that's really odd. It's kind of like when we're at the hospital, charity, I guess. Okay, well, we, again, we are just so very honored to be here to be able to present some really good people and to honor somebody that is here. So Karina, like she said, she is the director of the ER at Mountain View, and then Andy, she is the EMS liaison for our EMS agencies there, so, and then I'm the trauma coordinator, so. So this is kind of a really special event because it's not something that you get to do every day, and not very often, maybe never in your life. And so, when something like this happens, it's kind of a stressful thing, but when you act appropriately and act quickly and recognize certain things, you're able to actually make a difference, and literally a difference in somebody's life. And so, what happened on January 11th is really a miracle and a wonderful, wonderful thing for a family and for this victim. So on January 11th, and I know this was in the paper, and I know a lot of people know, but we really, like I say, it just doesn't happen very often, and so it's really a great thing to be able to recognize these people. So, January 11th, 2016, a neighbor found his neighbor lying in the street. And I'm not going to go into detailish, but he quickly responded to a site and found the victim unresponsive, not breathing, and with no heartbeat. This victim was clinically dead. Nine-on-one was called immediately and CPR was started immediately. Lucky for this male victim, there were people around who knew just what to do to save his life. An officer from Spanish Fork PD responded to the scene that was just a few blocks away. He quickly responded to the victim's side with his AED and applied the AED patches and turned on his monitor. Shock was advised, and the victim was shocked. CPR was then continued for two minutes, and the AED again responded with no shock advised this time. And CPR was continued throughout another two minutes, and at that end of that two minutes, then the AED advised that shock was advised, and so the victim was shocked again. By then, that was the second shock that the victim had. By then, the ambulance had responded and they had transported the victim into the ambulance and to Mountain View Hospital for further treatment. In route, the victim started breathing, and then he arrived at our facility where we immediately stabilized him and transferred him to the CAT lab, which he had more further treatment, and then there were more, you know, more treatment beyond that point. So, really, as far as the quick actions of what people did here in the, in the city, that's really what saved this man's life. And we would just like to honor, first of all, the victim, which is Keith. I was one of the primary nurses with him in the ER, and he, he looks a lot different right now than when he came in, so I'm so grateful that I could recognize him. But, anyway, we'd like to honor him. And then, the neighbor that actually saw him and responded, and the nine-on-one call was, was called and CPR was initiated, and that was a very quick, that was very quick thinking upon his part, and that was what really saved his life with the AED. So, so we would like to present to him, we've got two awards. We've got the American Heart Heart Saver Hero Award, and so we want to present that to him with a pin from American Heart, right here. And this is what it looks like. It's straight from American Heart. It's pretty, it's quite a nice little thing here.
You want to ask, tell us his name, because...
Jeremy. Sorry, Jeremy Porter.
There you go, some people in whole.
Congratulations. We're going to have you stand up here while we bring everybody else up here also. And then, this is an award from Mountain View Hospital. It is the Life Saved Award, and it is also presented to Jeremy Porter in recognition of dedicated and, of dedication and service amplified through the courageous act of saving, effort of saving a life. So we would like to also present that.
He's fine right there. We got cameras all over. Yeah, so it's good.
Okay, so the second, the second gentleman that we would like to, to honor is the man with the AED, and that is the, a big deal, having the AED. So, Mark Byers. So we've also got him an American Heart Heart Saver Hero Award, and also a plaque from Mountain View Emergency and Trauma Services. And the three that were on the call, the EMS call, again, this is not something that you see very often, when somebody collapses and they actually die and you get them back. It's just, it's, it's just a great thing that, that they were able to do this. So, if I could have Casey Brailsford come up. And Zach Robinson. And again, we'd like to congratulate these fine folks on their life-saving skills and their recognition, because Keith is alive today because of that. So, and I'm sure that his family very much appreciate it. Thank you for letting us come and do this. It's a pleasure.
Thank you for coming. We really appreciate, and we appreciate great citizens and great staff and all that they do here and help protect this great city. Thank you so much for, you know, getting involved, you know, that's, that's amazing, and we appreciate that. So, good example for those cute kids. Thank you. All right. Holy cow, there they go. Yeah, we thought you were all coming for us. Eric, have you had? Okay, just checking. Thank you. Hey, take care of him, Brian. So, that's good. All right. All right, as the chamber clears, so, that's awesome. We thought we had a full house here tonight, and there we go. All right, let's move to public comments. Anyone that'd like, if there's any public left, that'd like to come up and address the mayor and the council, you're sure welcome to come up. Scott, there you go. Come on, you're up.
I thought they were here to see me, but dang. Well, Mayor, City Council, I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. I recently came across...
You've got to state your name for the record.
Oh, sorry. Scott Ward.
Thank you.
Resident of Spanish Fork. I recently came across a program that's being implemented in various cities throughout the United States. Part of it is being spearheaded by the Wounded Warriors Foundation. The program consists of painting parking spaces purple and putting up a reserved combat wounded parking sign. Another half of that is not necessarily run or facilitated by the Wounded Warriors Foundation, but there's also a reserved veteran parking program, and both of those are being implemented in various cities. Combat, the Wounded Warriors Program has sent out and provided over 2,000 reserved combat wounded signs throughout the United States, and they provide the signs free of charge. I had brief discussions with Mayor Lifeson, Councilman Mendenhall, and Seth Perrins about the concept. I also posted the idea on Facebook page. We got 192 likes for whatever that means. There were only two people that really said that the government shouldn't be doing that or treating combat veterans or veterans in general any special from anybody else, and I don't think that this does that. Because of the support, what Mr. Perrins recommended is that we have Mr. Robinson from the Parks and Rec, as well as Mr. Perrins, and maybe a member of the City Council, meet with me, kind of look at the various options, locations, the types of signs, how many we should do. We're not looking really to pass an ordinance or propose passing an ordinance where the police officers would be writing tickets, enforcing it, be more or less voluntarily observed. And so, I'm just here to present that to you. We'll probably come back the first part of March, or maybe the middle of March, depending on how long it takes to come up with a program that can be implemented here in Spanish Fork. Welcome any suggestions or feedback that you would have in doing that. I'll leave that to the council to recommend somebody that, that we can work with if you'd like to do that, and that's all I have.
Great. Thanks, Scott. Appreciate that. Anyone else that'd like to come up and address the council? All right, seeing none, we'll go to council comments. We'll start with Councilman Argal.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to, so this Friday was seniors' Valentine dance and dinner, and I first would like to thank the youth council. They, they showed up and served, and we're grateful for that and the service that they give. Then later, they had, after they got their dinner, they had a, a dance, and the youth council got to do a little bit of dancing, but the seniors danced the night away. There was a lot of people down there dancing. My wife indicated that I guess we're going to have to take dancing lessons, so we're going to be a part of that. So, anyway, we're grateful for that. They had a good time and a good, good meal, and thanks, that's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Councilman Mendenhall.
You're not going to believe it, I got nothing, Mayor. I have nothing.
Will you mark that down as a star of this one?
But, in that vein, Stacy's absent, so I will invite Clark to come up, and I yield my time to the director.
There we go. Come on up, Clark.
Sure, other people, probably from the council, recognize this, but I just want to, on behalf of the chamber, give our love and prayers to Louis Field's family. And just to show you how beloved he was, or is, posting it on our chamber Facebook page, we had 25,500 views. I mean, and that was just one, one look, but don't, never be a cowboy, I don't think, out of this town quite like Louis. And anyway, as a chamber, I'm incredibly proud of what he did for putting Spanish Fork on the map, and he almost put me on the map a couple of times too as a younger kid, but we drove too fast. But, would just like to acknowledge the fact that we had an incredibly successful, you know, bills and bagels. A lot of you were there, and there's always an amazing turnout. It never ceases to amaze me how incredibly passionate people in this community are about politics. So, watch out. But, there will be another one of those, and, and the chamber will be pushing that and providing information on that. We are still growing. The phone is ringing. We're averaging at least one phone call a day. We signed up our first out-of-Utah Valley member. We signed up a cabinetry shop in Harriman, Utah. So, if any of you would like to come with us to the ribbon cutting in Harriman, you're more than welcome. We did have a, this week, a ribbon cutting with Holster and Company in the Precision Vision and the Canyon Foot and Ankle Building. It's interesting to note that we now have three chamber members all using the same suite of offices, so we're gathering in droves, but we just want to express our thanks and, and appreciation for the support that the city gives us. And as the snow's starting to melt, IFA had its annual barbecue. There was a Gordon guy there wandering around that looked a little bit lost, but people showed him around. But, it was interesting to see people buying things that you know are going to be being sold at the farmer's market in just a few weeks. So, we thank you.
Thanks, Clark.
Thank you, Clark.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Councilman Scopes.
Mayor, I have nothing significant to report at this time.
Gosh, it's a banner day. Love it. Councilman Gordon.
Mayor, just quickly, at an airport meeting, things are going well out there. They've got Dave Bradford pushing snow this year, and he's been plenty, plenty busy doing that, but I've been working through some airport design standards for, for the hangars and, and coming up with some of those, so we continued a lot of that action for later. And so, things are, things are going well there. Very excited to see the new hangars that are going to go along the frontage of Main Street down there. So, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. On Clark's note there with the bills and bagels, Friday night, before it was a Saturday morning at 7:30, and I told my wife, I said, "Well, I'm going to this Bills and Bagels." She says, "Well, I'm going too, because I really like going to that, because I've got some questions about education." And so, it is a good thing, and those that, it gives you an opportunity to be able to talk to your legislators, your local legislators, and ask questions, and, you know, be more personal, one-on-one with them. So, that's a, it's a good thing. Okay, let's move to our consent items. Real property purchase agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a contract to purchase some property, extend 1,400 more, make another extension between Main Street and Third West. There's still another parcel that needs to be obtained to, to make that connection. This is the biggest parcel that we lack yet. This is coming from the Bingham family, and it's based on an appraisal, and the purchase price would be $119,682.
Any questions or comments on this?
So, in our discussion with this junior, they talked about some of the stuff that, so is there going to be curb and gutter on either side of this right now, when we...
Probably not. Probably just build a ribbon road initially, but we are applying all the land for it.
Okay.
Any others? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes. All right, ordinance 04-16, make an amendment to the infill overlay zone to allow higher density.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Staff was instructed, some meetings ago, I believe about two months ago, to prepare the proposed amendment. That's before you tonight. We, I believe, discussed then, the idea of trying to make it as simple as we possibly could. So, that's kind of the direction that we followed as we put this language together. There are essentially just two aspects to the proposal. One's just kind of the mechanics of it, and the other has to do with the actual impact of the proposed change. In short, the change that's proposed tonight would allow for an infill overlay project in the R1-6 zone to potentially have 9.85 units per acre in it, whereas today, the ceiling is eight. Go from eight to 9.6, sorry, 9.85. And in the R3 zone, the change would result in allowing a density of 13.36 units per acre in an infill overlay project, again, in the R3 zone, whereas today, the maximum density would typically be 12 units to the acre. So, that's the actual change that's proposed, simply allowing for an increase in density in infill overlay projects in the only two zones where they're allowed, R1-6 and R3. And then also, kind of by way of the mechanics, the proposed change would, would spell out that density in what's allowed right here in Title 15, as you can read in, in the proposal, whereas now, Title 15 refers to the general plan and the density that our general plan identifies for a particular property. This way of having the density spelled out in your zoning ordinance, today is the most common way that cities define something like density or any other characteristics that a development legally can have. So, I think this is a step in the right direction that way. But, again, that's just kind of the mechanics behind the proposed change. Really, we're just talking about allowing for a little bit higher density. Like I said, we, as staff, took from previous discussions, the, I believe, instruction to keep this as simple as we could. There were some other things that had been discussed, but maybe including some other stipulations that might provide a benchmark that a project needed to hit in order to achieve more density. Talked a lot about things like access, maybe some site-specific characteristics in terms of the context of what surrounds a project. And as we, we thought that through and discussed it, the thing that resonated with us was simply that with the approval of any infill overlay project, ultimately, you as the land use authority have complete discretion as to whether, whether to approve a proposal or not. And that's been part of the design of this program from the beginning, where, you know, within certain parameters, such as how many units per acre you can have, it's really intended to provide flexibility for applicants to be able to design projects hopefully in, in creative and therefore superior ways than what we received before with more strict zoning standards. And, you know, we believe that it's likely best to keep that aspect of the proposal today, to the ordinance that is today, as much as we can. Again, with the idea that even though an applicant has the freedom to propose whatever they'd like, ultimately, it's up to the city council with, I believe, essentially absolute discretion as to whether or not you approve a zone change for an infill overlay project or not. So, that's why we kept it just to the language that we see before you tonight. The planning commission reviewed this just about two weeks ago and recommended that it be approved.
Okay, since this is a public hearing, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilman Scopes and a second by Councilman Mendenhall. Anyone that'd like to come up and address the council on this particular, oh, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. I guess now we can do it. All right. Anyone that'd like to come and address the council on this, you're sure welcome to come up.
My name is Paul Casey, and this is pertaining to a piece of property that I have that I've worked with Dave Anderson on, getting this changed to possibly use the property for more than just a single-family dwelling home that is surrounded by four complexes. My intention is not to disrupt the density. I understand the city's plan, so that we're not perplexing everywhere, and I was just hoping for this to allow me more than just a single-family dwelling home, because, one, it wouldn't really fit there, and, one, would really want to purchase it, I don't think, but it also gives me a little bit better use of the land that I have purchased with another piece of property. So, with that, I'm just trying to make Spanish Fork better, as far as in my mind, putting something on a piece of ground that just grows weeds, making the neighborhood look better. I lived in the neighborhood for 18 years to start, so I'm back there. I'm just trying to make it look a lot better for Spanish, and that's my intent.
Great. Thanks, thanks, Paul. Anyone else left come talk about this one? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions, discussions, comments?
Yeah, Dave, I've got a couple of questions. So, with the... So, the, on the number five with the, so if they build, are they still going to have to have this 60 feet of frontage?
Yes.
When you say frontage, not just onto a road?
We define frontage by the, I think, the boundary that a property shares with a public right of way. That's frontage.
With the public, so it'd essentially be a street with a right of way. So, so this, so zone three, and I should have looked at this, zone three and six, this is going to affect a very large part of the city, correct?
That's a great question. So, primarily, the R1-6 and R3 zones are located in the originally platted parts of the community, the old square blocks, although we do have a few of both the R1-6 and R3 zones in some other areas as well, at Long State Road 51, for example. But, yeah, it, it, thousands and thousands of properties, certainly.
So, and so the reason that we did not, that we did away with like the flag lots and stuff, do you, what, what was the reason we did that?
Primarily, it was complaints from neighbors who were surprised when all of a sudden, on an adjoining property, somebody started to build a house in what they thought was the rear of their own, essentially.
Their home, essentially. Large, large lots divided.
It's the deep lots that really beat it up.
So, is that going to, this, this will start that back up, correct?
This would not change the fact that right now, Title 15 does say that flag lots are not allowed.
Okay.
Now, it may become an issue of semantics, because conceivably, somebody could propose an infill overlay project that might look a little bit like a flag lot development. And that's part of what, you know, ultimately, the city council can weigh as you decide whether to approve a development proposal or not.
So, if they proposed a development being more than one lot, or more than multiple homes on one lot, but this would pretty much state that, that they would have the right to do that, correct?
I would not say that they would have the right to do it. I would say that they have the right to ask for permission to do it, and the city's not obligated to approve a particular proposal.
So, that, and you get the discretion to the city council to...
This is a legislative act, the way that this program is designed. So, in that capacity, I understand the city council, acting as a legislative body, really does have considerable discretion.
So, we would have the discretion as, you know, on an individual basis, of each case coming before us?
Precisely. And maybe just to speak for the role that we, as staff, might play in this, we certainly would look to maybe create something of a consistent track record. Again, might be context-sensitive, given a particular situation or setting, particular characteristics that a property or a neighborhood has, as we evaluate what we think is appropriate and make recommendations to the planning commission and you. And I would guess that over time, you know, we would have a little bit of history with different cases that we can point to as... as applicants ask us questions about what realistically the council may or may not consider, that that typically happens over time. But this is still relatively new. We created infill overlay, I believe initially in two thousand and eight, which prior to two thousand and eight, there had been tremendous development pressure in the older part of the community. Seen a lot of, a lot of construction on the deep lots of different, different types, which led to the concerns, which led to the change, but that also synced up from a timing perspective with the slowdown in the housing market and the decrease in demand. And I think that's largely why we haven't seen more activity in those parts of the city with people making use of the infill overlay provisions.
Any other questions, comments?
Just had a comment. After the first year, we got together with the planning commission, and they were, they were a little, you know, shocked, I guess, or as to, you know, maybe not just me, but some of our entertaining this notion, right? And, and as Mr. Casey stated, you know, he's got this, this one situation where we're improving an area in which he lives and currently has, has, excuse me, properties, and it seems to fit. So I appreciate you stating, Dave, that it's up to discretion. I've tried to think today, and we've had discussions, of how many, how many of the thousands of properties that, you know, you mentioned earlier, this could potentially, you know, bring forth another situation. And I really don't see thousands or hundreds, or even in the high teens or teens for that matter. So we may, we may have an influx of these people coming to us, but it feels like to me what we're doing is improving our community in this area, and, and especially in, you know, we're talking about tonight, maybe just one, Mr. Casey's property. But if it gives an opportunity to better the community, that's why I've stated in December that I would be for something like this. So that's the comment that I would make.
Okay. I think it's important for the public to somewhat understand that too, in a setting that just like Brandon said, and Dave's alluded to you, Paul Casey's property in the middle of fourplex heaven to do something like this. When we open it up for public comment, to people to come speak for or against the project, we get nobody here that speaks against it because there's other fourplexes around it. So a duplex isn't going to change the nature of that immediate area. But if we had somebody downtown in the middle of the blocks wanting to do that, maybe to their home, and that proposal comes forth and the public hearing happens, and now you have people that are surrounding that property come and have something to say about that, whether it's this council or a future council, that could weigh on that decision of, well, we'd allow it, we allowed it here, but we're not going to allow it there because of, it doesn't fit, you know. That's what the infill overlay tool is for, is to say, we do have that discretion of why it fit up there and why it doesn't fit maybe down somewhere else. So. That's an important point that I appreciate Dave making.
Dave, I just have a quick question. What, what impact will this have on either current or future inventory? We've talked high density throughout the city. We've got the infill overlay through certain areas where you can have retail below housing and stuff. What impacts do you see this has on, on city inventory?
That's a great question. I sure wish I had some rational answer. I don't.
You were gonna tell me it was a great question no matter what.
I mean, I, I always like to try to talk about the future and play prognosticator and try to guess, you know, what the future might bring. It's kind of right up my alley. But typically, when there's more of an opportunity for the development community to make use of something, achieve higher density, for example, that's obviously what we're talking about here, at least conceivably, then there's, there's more profit to be made. So you would think that long-term, this probably would result in there being more infill overlay projects, at least proposed. But I, I don't know how to predict that.
So, so we're we're, we're gonna pass an ordinance that's gonna allow this to happen. Are we crossing a line then where we're gonna say, okay, now each individual case, we're gonna say whether we're gonna let you do that or not? Are we crossing that?
Nope, we crossed that.
We crossed that.
Yeah, so that, that part of the program has existed for a while, and honestly, it's fairly common. We took clues from a few different cities here in the valley that have had some success with this type of project-by-project zoning approval and sort of adapted what they'd done to something that we felt made some sense here. So it's, it's not, it's not a real avant-garde approach to, to zoning for unique areas like this. And I think that's really the important thing to emphasize is that this isn't a greenfield kind of development tool. At least, that's not what it was envisioned to be, where you've got twenty acres of flat farmland that somebody's going to develop. Instead, the idea is you've got the property that maybe has a structure on it that, that should be designed around, and you've got homes surrounding the property in close quarters, and architecture should match, and different things like that. That's much more the essence of what this is intended to, to address.
Well, I, what Paul's gonna do there, I agree with that, but it worries me what the future, if we're gonna go backwards now to the flag lots and complaints. And I know there's some people, I've had calls, that are watching this right now, that have a flag lot.
Well, yeah, I, I feel like this goes without saying, maybe, but the onus is on the city council. The buck does stop with the council, and I'm sure you'll get pressured for more than one direction as proposals are made, and that, that's by design. That's really how it's intended to work.
Well, I, the thing I like about this ordinance here is because we have some certain cases in the city where it makes sense to do this, and there's other situations it doesn't, but it gives us discretion to the, this body to, to say, yeah, that looks right, and this doesn't look right. And before, it was just cut and dry, you know, you couldn't do it. And so I think that's what I like about this. And as we looked at some of these situations, there's probably, as we've talked, I've gone and talked to Dave, and and there's probably really only ten properties that this would affect. And I would imagine maybe two out of those ten would even consider this, but it could happen. But it gives the flexibility to, if it makes sense on certain areas, it gives us that discretion to do it. And, and we, we can take them on an individual case, and not just a cut and dry thing. So. Anything else? If, go ahead, sorry. You were, go for it.
All right. I move that we approve ordinance four dash sixteen, making amendments to the infill overlay zone to allow higher densities.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scopes, a second by Councilman Gordon. Since this is a ordinance, it'll be roll call vote. Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Nay.
Okay, that passes. Moving to the next, ordinance A sixteen dash oh one, annexing property known as the Nelson Annex.
I'm, I'm more than happy to do as much with this tonight as the council would like. The applicant has requested that this be continued to your next meeting. He'd like to be here and be a part of the discussion. We've scheduled a public hearing for tonight. So you certainly could either open that and take comment tonight, close it, you could continue it, open it, continue it, and allow for a public comment in both meetings tonight and your next one, but the applicant has requested this be continued. So that being said, do you want me to take any time with it tonight, or what's?
No, let's do it next. Is there anyone here for the public hearing for the Nelson? So should we, can we just, should we go ahead and open it, or junior, or would you just do it next?
My preference would be to open it and continue it without closing it.
Okay. So I'd entertain a motion to go into a public hearing for the Nelson annexation.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scopes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are now in a public hearing on the Nelson. Anyone that'd like to talk? If not, I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing.
So moved.
Let's, let's continue to the specific day.
To March first, city council meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Ordinance ZZ zero one dash sixteen, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork for the Dave Storage Zone Change.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Dave's storage units are located on Fifth South and about two hundred West, a little area down there at the community that's zoned industrial. I don't know the exact history by way of when these storage units were constructed. I think they were started twenty or maybe twenty-five years ago. They've at least partially been constructed in phases over time. So this is really the entire parcel that we're looking at, it's Dave's storage units. You may recall, a couple of months ago, the city council approved what we are referring to as the self-storage overlay so that conceivably, you could approve storage units at locations where previously they simply weren't allowed. And this is one of the locations previously where they weren't allowed simply because the property is zoned industrial one. But now, on properties that are zoned industrial one, that are at least two hundred and fifty feet from Main Street, as this one is, city council has the discretion of either approving or denying, but again, it's essentially a zone change to allow for the construction of storage units or not. And the ordinance that was adopted again just a few months ago, creating the self-storage overlay spells out some very specific criteria that need to be met. One of them is the geographic criteria that I just mentioned, by way of being a certain distance from Main Street and some other things. And another criteria has to do with some findings that need to be met in order for the council to be able to approve the overlay. So with respect to the self-storage overlay, there is some, some, I believe, very black and white guidance provided in the ordinance. But the idea simply is to make sure that, first of all, the site is appropriate for storage units. And then secondly, to make sure that the design of a project is appropriate for the site. So if, let's say, the site happens to be a really difficult parcel to use, so we couldn't necessarily conceive of somebody building an office building there, or maybe some type of a retail business, it's, let's say, just a remnant, or access, perhaps, some defect like that, that might lead us to think, hey, that is an appropriate site for storage units. But let's say that that same site that's defective in some way happens to be on a busy street. So while we're, we're comfortable with storage units being there, we want them to look good. And this self-storage overlay gives, again, ultimately, the city council discretion to dictate things like architecture and different design criteria to make sure that not only is the, the site appropriate for storage units, but also that the project looks good. Now, with respect to this project, and I don't in any way, shape, or form intend to be disparaging about the area, but frankly, it's an industrial part of the community. The area where the storage unit buildings would be constructed, it's behind storage units and behind a retail development here. It's fairly secluded, and right now, the property is not in the most attractive condition by way of what's there and kind of its current state of maintenance. So I believe staff and the planning commission both view this as the same type of opportunity in terms of what constructing additional buildings might do here, actually might improve it. And because of the secluded nature of that property there, both staff and the planning commission didn't seem to feel like there was a need to spend a lot of time dictating what those buildings look like, what type of trees they plant around them, and different things like that. So as proposed, the self-storage overlay for Dave's storage to allow for additional buildings to be built here comes to the city council with a recommendation for approval from both the development review committee and the planning commission.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scopes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, anyone that would like to come up and talk about this particular project, you're sure welcome to come up from the public.
Mayor, city council. I am Dave Herring. I own the project, and we did start about twenty, twenty-five years ago, and we have built it in phases. So we haven't built a building for, I would guess, seven years. So when we applied for a building permit, I found out I wasn't allowed to do that anymore, where initially I could apply for a building permit and move forward. So in my humble opinion, it just makes sense to allow me to finish the project. Right now, it's just an open piece of ground, and with my existing storage units, I have a handful of small shops on the property also to diversify the property. And some of those individuals that rent those small shops are taking the liberty to park things out in the field, is what we call it. We will be able to manage it much more meaningful once we get buildings built on that property. People will not be able to just put trucks and trailers and cars out there. So that's our hope, is to make it more aesthetically pleasing and also finish the project that we started and wrap it up. So any questions?
Dave, do you have a, on the north end there, do you have a, is there a fence that separates you and the other property to the north?
Yeah, north of me is the Seven Tree property, and we do have a six-foot-high concrete block fence that we've put in years ago.
The access would still come from the south to get to those additional units?
Right, right, yeah. That's my property line is the outline, so it, and it's a block fence back there, six-foot tall. Any other questions?
We may have some more after we end the public hearing. So.
All right.
Thank you. Anyone else that'd like to come talk? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing. Got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any other comments, discussions, questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Dave, I did, would you mind coming back up, please? I just, I just want to make sure there was nobody else here to, to.
Oh, he just wanted to make you walk up and back.
I, as you mentioned, you have some people here that, that do mechanic work, throttle body work along here, correct?
There, on occasion, we do have, and right now, we do.
Yeah.
We don't require leases. It's just a month-to-month. They, they sign a storage contract, quite honestly. So it gives individuals an opportunity to start their business, and we've had many businesses start in our facility and get big and move on. So that's, that's our niche.
And the reason I bring that up is because I, I've been down there.
Okay.
And so my question or concern is, like you say, they're taking the liberty of using this, all this, and I haven't counted how many cars are out here, but will, will this now create an influx of cars out and about? I mean.
More traffic?
More traffic. I mean, here, he, he's, he's busy. He's got, he's got a lot of cars coming and going.
He can at times. When you say a lot, there's two or three, four customers a day at times, so. And we're referring to Saul Flores Automotive, I'm sure.
Yeah.
You know, and Saul might have to find a bigger location, and we've talked to him about it.
Okay, so.
Or pay you for storage if you put storage units on top of it.
Yeah, and he wouldn't be able to afford that. So again, there's been many a business that have moved on because they just outgrow the, the parking facilities that we have based per unit per shop. I, just to maybe complete the answer, I, I've just allowed Saul to go ahead and park what he, what he brings in, and it, and I sometimes ask him to, and we have, we've actually posted signs telling people that we will tow anything left overnight. And we just posted those last summer in order to, it's not near as bad as that picture shows right now.
Okay, gotcha.
However, there is one fellow that does pallets that will have to move on also. He's outgrowing the facility, so. But he's, you know, these, these men have gotten a foothold, and they've got a following and a clientele, and wherever they move, I'm sure that people will follow, so.
That was my question. Thank you.
Any others? Thanks, appreciate that. Now I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance Z zero one dash sixteen, changing the zoning description and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Dave Storage Zone Change.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall. Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, and a second by Councilman Argal. This will be a ordinance, so we'll do it by roll call. Councilman Argal.
Yes.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobbs.
Aye.
That passes. Okay, moving on to new business, SFCN rate increase. Holy moly.
Herring.
Brian, that's the wolves.
Brian, that's right.
John wasn't strong enough to come, so he sent you, huh?
You can only take so much of this. Mayor, Councilman, thank you for giving us a few minutes tonight, even though it's for one of our least favorite topics. We do have to discuss this from time to time. To start off, can you pull up that slideshow?
Yeah. Oh, look, it's Swift, that's awesome.
Got to give him a minute, he's a rookie.
New, new settings on my computer, so. Go ahead and keep it up there for now, and he can, he can talk. You want a slide two?
Okay, yeah, let's, let's go to the next, the next slide there. First thing I wanted to talk about just a little bit is some of the upcoming, what we've got there, difficult times for cable television. We have kind of a rough road ahead of us as far as the cable TV industry. We're in a, we're in a period of time when the content providers that used to be our partners in this industry really don't see us as partners anymore. They're more interested in making sure they're protecting their revenue streams. And they've, they've kind of gotten themselves into a vicious cycle where, as it shows here, I'm not sure why they're all numbered one, but.
Yawned at it, I'm sure.
That's okay.
They're all top priorities.
Now, I printed this earlier, and they're one through five here, so. These providers, anyway, are in a cycle where they want to protect that revenue stream. So they continue to raise their rates as they shed cable TV customers. Well, they're shedding cable TV customers because their rates continue to raise. And each programmer refuses really to acknowledge that this is happening across the entire board. So if they want a dime more, and the other, the other programmer wants a quarter more, it adds up at the end of the, at the end of the day. Couple that with the problems we see with the off-air channels, the broadcast channels, who really have no, no qualms with charging whatever they want to charge as far as rebroadcast consent goes. We have to pay for those channels that we give you that you can turn around and get for free off of the air. It's kind of a, kind of a bad notion, but that's the way it works in the cable TV industry. And they're willing to charge us whatever they feel like they need to charge us. And consequently, that raises our customers' rates. The FCC has no intention of interfering here. This is free commerce, free trade. This is, the, the market will bear what the market will bear. And then on top of that, we have the over-the-top, the OTT, which is your services like Netflix, Hulu, Amazon Video, all those streaming video services that continue to entice new users away, and they want to watch that video mobile, wherever they are, whatever device they want to be on. And that makes cable TV a little bit less of a, of a necessity in their minds. So if we go to the next slide, how do we, big button in the middle, right?
No, towards me, the button on the side, there you go.
Okay, there we go. If we look at how our competitors handle these same issues, first and foremost, they just don't tell you what you're going to pay. They make it very, very difficult for you to find out what your bill is going to be at the end of the month. They'll, they'll show you all of the specials and all of the possible prices, but they never give you the total. They never give you the bottom line.
Is that kind of like you hiding what the word obfuscation means?
Obfuscation.
Did John do this?
This is, in all honesty, this is, this is John's presentation. He was well into preparing this presentation before he realized he wasn't going to be here tonight to give it.
But that's, that's so a John Boak at word. I mean, that's a great word.
That is, that is. And it's, it's good, because it fits. It is exactly what we're dealing with. They also, they also add all sorts of other fees to cover these issues. A five-dollar broadcast fee for what the, what the off-air channels are charging us to give you their signal. Three-dollar local sports fee to cover what ESPN and Disney really bend you over the barrel for. I mean, there are some expensive channels. They don't tell you they're going to charge you for that cable modem if you want their internet service. The discounts are for their new customers only. If you've been their customer before and you want to go back and get that rate, sorry, that's, that's not the way it works. Long contracts with the, with the special price only being for part of the term. And on top of that, you have to have a set-top box to get any of those cable TV channels. So we don't want to be that way. SFCN, that's not what we're for. That's not what we've built for. That's not what, how we want to serve our community. So how do we do that? We, on our website, we have very, very clear pricing. We have very clear packages. There are no hidden fees. There is no obfuscation of any of that information. What you see on those prices is what's on your bill at the end of the day. We have no hidden fees like that. The cable modems, we don't charge you a rental for those cable modems. We will give you a cable modem. If it breaks, we will give you a new cable modem. We don't, we don't feel the need to rent that device to you. And we don't want to lock you into a contract. If you find something else, if you want, if you want to switch, if you're moving next month, we don't want you to have to fight to get out of a two-year contract just because it no longer fits your lifestyle. So we, we avoid all of that. That's not what we want at SFCN. One of the other main features that's very, very, very rare, as Point Number Four shows, very rare in the cable TV industry, is we don't require a set-top box for any of our basic or expanded basic cable TV channels. If you have a newer TV that has a digital tuner built into it, you get those channels. You don't have to have the set-top box on every TV like you do with other services. Plus, we're in the middle of working on converting all of our channels to HD. If the channel is in HD anywhere, if it's available to us in HD, we want it available to you in HD. We don't see a reason for any longer than we have to. We don't see a reason to have both a standard definition channel and a high-definition channel. TVs these days, everybody wants the high definition anyway. So that's, that's a couple of the things that we're trying to do. Now, to, to really get to the meat of what we're looking at here, over the last year, we've had a lot of contracts that have come up for renewal that we've had to have really difficult discussions with some of the providers. We, we almost lost a few of the channels through these discussions as well. They are very tense contract negotiations. Every contract that comes due, the, the content providers seem to want the moon. They want to, they want to start out huge. They want double-digit rate increases. They want all this extra money for channels that really people don't want to pay more money for, and half of us don't even watch them anyway. But, so at the end of the year, after all those negotiations, and by the way, we couldn't do this if we weren't members of the NCTC, the National Cable Television Co-op. We just aren't big enough. Little Spanish Fork, it takes us banding together with thousands of other companies like us into a co-op to be able to negotiate these rates and get them back into some semblance of normalcy. And, and it's tough. It's difficult. But at the end of the year, here we are again. We've got all our contracts renewed. We didn't end up losing any channels. But there are increases, as there are each year. Now, it's important to remember that these price increases are only the prices that those services cost us. The increases in those services to us. There is, there is no increase to our revenue. There is no, we don't get another penny from you. This is just the additional money that we've, we've had to pay. And some of this, we've been paying a while for you. You're welcome. But it's, it's time to catch up and get the rates back to where they, they need to be to keep us operating on a day-to-day basis. So the changes here, we've got the basic tier that goes from seventeen fifty-four up to eighteen seventy-six. The expanded basic will move from sixty-three sixty-nine up to sixty-nine oh-four. The super digital tier will go from seventy-seven ninety-nine to eighty-two eighty-three. The full package from a hundred and ten dollars even to one fourteen eighty-four. And the triple play, which is your cable TV, your internet, and your, your phone service, will be one oh-five sixty-five, moving up to a hundred and eleven dollars even. So these are the rate increases for twenty sixteen that will keep us functional and keep us operating. Now, a couple of things that we want to remember, in comparison to some of your other options that are available, our basic tier, which is going to eighteen seventy-six, it's important to point out that your other options are going to cost you nearly thirty dollars for exactly the same and most likely fewer channels than what we offer in that basic. And as, as such, the expanded basic, digital starter, does the same thing. Ours is sixty-nine oh-four, where if you compare that to our competition, it's eighty-three forty-nine. So still a significant savings for our citizens, even though our hands are really much more tied than we like them to be when it comes to this. But we, we continue to do what we can and make this as functional as possible for our customers. If we compare a few other things, just to note, we don't charge the broadcast fee of five dollars. We don't charge a local sports fee.
My bad. What'd you say?
Okay. There is no, there is no fee for the modem rental. We don't charge any of those. There is no contract term. There's just two years. Ours is zero seconds. No set-top box required for the, the basic and the expanded basic. And that really is, it, it's important to remember that you just don't find that in the cable TV industry. It's, it's an industry where they want everything encrypted, everything private, everything, they want to, they want you to pay for everything. Every set-top box, every piece of equipment. But your TV has that built in in most cases. We want you to be able to use that. The DVR, the video recorder, nineteen ninety-five for theirs versus thirteen dollars for ours, which just helps cover the cost of the equipment. And as you can see in the corner, a little tiny fine print that costs you money each and every month. Too much with them and none with us. We don't like the fine print. We don't like that game. So, council, thank you for your time this evening. With your permission, we propose that we move forward with those rate increases for twenty sixteen, unless there are any questions.
Oh, yeah, you're just the messenger.
There's only so much we can do.
That's great. We need to make a motion on that, Junior?
Yeah. So we would make them effective April first?
I believe that's correct.
April first. So what we do? In, in the, in the meantime, we have to notify the customers of the cable company, so we put in the next newsletter, which would hit mailboxes March first with an effective date of April first, I think, is what John, we've done in the past. So we'll do that with this next newsletter and then go from there.
All right, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the SFCN rate increase effective April one.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Scobbs, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. There, what's that? Oh, Councilman Argal, sorry.
I already blamed for increasing the rates.
Yeah, I know, there you go.
Do all of the councilmen have SFCN?
I do.
I do?
I do not.
Okay.
And what's, you know, that's the beauty about it. They can all do whatever they want.
That, that's true, you know, but when you're deciding this.
Well, we were elected by the, the citizens, and so not every citizen has it.
That's true.
Yeah.
I just, just a question.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. All right, moving to the Birdie Creek Preliminary Platte.
We've seen a few different development proposals in the last year or two for properties that are east of Maple Mountain High School, east of twenty-five fifty east. And what really has been the impetus for those proposals is the Stillman Annexation that was approved about a year and a half ago by the city council, where the applicant on that project was able to solve a couple of deficiencies that we have, primarily our ability to provide sewer service, but also our ability to provide power to properties east of twenty-five fifty east. So just off of this image here, above and to the left is Maple Mountain High School, right here. So this is twenty-five fifty east, right here. This is First South, right here. And the subject property is here. So currently, we don't have any subdivision-type proposals on the books, south of First South, over here, again, east of twenty-five fifty east. The subject property was annexed eight or nine years ago, and at that time, it was zoned R one fifteen. So where we're at tonight with this property is that the property is zoned for the development that's proposed. The proposal does conform to the city's requirements for master plan developments in the R one fifteen zone. And we believe that the applicant can provide necessary services to the property. If any of you have been in the area recently, you know that there's really big pipes going in the ground and things. There will be more of that. And personally, just incidentally, I really feel like this is going to be ground zero for development for the next few years. And necessarily think it'll take long for some sizable tracts of this area to be developed. But again, the property is zoned in accordance with the proposal. And I think largely just from that perspective, both the planning commission and development review committee have recommended that the proposed subdivision be approved.
Right, thanks. Any questions on this? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I, quickly, Mayor, since we're not going into public hearing with this, but the minutes I read in planning and zoning, sounds like Dave, the, the frontage on their side of that road. I've traveled that road quite a bit from my house to Mapleton. And their front side will be improved, sidewalk, curb, gutter, along with our standards.
Just a small part of it that they actually have as frontage on First South, which is this right here. So honestly, that's going to make, not make a real big dent. And the problem that exists, and let me be clear, I, I believe it's a problem. We have an old county road. Who knows how it was built over time, how it got to be.
Hey, I rode that by bike coming down that to go to work all the time.
I said old county, old, county, old.
It worked this way when I went on it.
Completely wore out.
It's not a street that meets our typical standards for, you know, a road to serve a development. But as is often the case, the situation probably is going to get a little bit worse before it gets better. We don't build streets typically as the city. That happens, like I think Councilman Mendenhall is referring to, as development occurs and developers develop their frontage. So for example, you can kind of see the faint lines here to the north. This is part of the canyon. This is subdivision. Like tomorrow, probably our development review committee will approve the first phase of that project. And one of the requirements they have is to improve all of that frontage that they have on First South. Curb gutter sidewalk, expand the asphalt.
On just the north side?
Everything, just the north side, which is typically how, how we approach things unless there's a real safety concern. We just look to developers to essentially improve the frontage that they have on a street. So again, it's kind of even the heat that this project has so little frontage. They certainly would be required to improve that and build the streets interior and the development. But the south side of the street likely wouldn't be improved until other properties in the area develop. And of course, with developments like this, you get more traffic on those streets, and that's where, as I say, things typically get a little bit worse. But at the same time, developments like this is generally are what take utilities to the property's doorstep. And the evolution seems to be, you know, somewhat predictable at that point in time, so.
Worth noting that when some of those first complaints that come are sometimes the people that are building in that, you know, buying homes in that subdivision and, and realize that their whole road's not going to be improved, but in the front of their subdivision will. It'll take time for the rest of it. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the Bridle Creek Preliminary Platte.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on, Riverpoint Preliminary Platte reapproval.
It's just a little over a year ago that the city council approved the preliminary plat for the Riverpoint subdivision initially. And frankly, not much has changed since then. The project simply lost its approval because a certain amount of time lapsed without them receiving forward to actually start construction. So before they can start construction, you do need to reapprove the preliminary plat. As far as the design of the plats concerned, there've just been a couple of what I would call pretty minor changes. Some lots have been redesigned over in this part of the project slightly. Although the total number of lots in the development has not changed, it's the same. And over here, this, this easement, for example, is no longer there. I think you might know the image in the staff report shows that this has been located now along the eastern boundary of the property. I think you might note the image in the staff report shows that this has been located now, uh, along the eastern boundary of the property, which is something that we had staffed. So I was, uh, as a good idea the first time through. But, uh, again, uh, essentially the same project as what was talked about before, um, when it was approved back in two thousand and fourteen. Uh, a couple of concerns that we've had since we first started talking about the development of this property have been rehashed with the applicant as part of this reapproval process. We know that there's a considerable amount of construction debris on the subject property. So there's a fairly intricate plan in place for the inspection of excavating that'll happen on the subject property along with, uh, the proposal to use perhaps a considerable amount of concrete, uh, that we know is buried on site as it's recycled and placed, um, in the development, you know, perhaps as engineered fill or for some other purpose to ready the property for development. One thing that we've been very particular about, uh, staff is making sure that, um, the applicant understands clearly that no public streets will be constructed on any construction debris. So the expectation is that one hundred percent of any debris be excavated and that that be inspected to make sure that, uh, native ground is identified. And that's where again, uh, potentially that debris might be recycled, which I understand is quite common in the world of building things using, uh, recycled material again as engineered fill. So that could be placed back, uh, down, uh, in preparation for developing roads and that type of a thing. But, uh, again, one hundred percent of the debris removed underneath any public streets. And also in an area that will be identified as the footprint for homes in the development. So no homes will be constructed in the development on any debris. Uh, that to me sounds like a daunting task, a significant undertaking. Um, I think frankly, that challenge is one of the reasons that the applicant didn't act on it immediately after the plat was approved the first time. But the applicant has represented us consistently that they, they have a plan that they believe can work to where they can meet those conditions and address the fill, um, accordingly. Flood plain and floodway concerns there, other things that we've talked with the applicant about over the years. We're not suggesting that any conditions change there from what were originally imposed. Uh, simply put, none of the, the lots that homes will be located on can have any part of the lot within the flood plain. Um, so that's why you see some of the lots designed the way that they are. And frankly, we as staff feel like that, that adequate, excuse me, adequately addresses any concerns that any homeowners might have in the future of the city uh, relative to the river, potential flooding and that type of a thing. Also since, uh, the project was originally approved, we've made some adjustments to some of the criteria that we have for developing next to Spanish Fork River. And the applicant is aware of some of the other measures that he'll have to take to make sure that the channel's stable and so forth. So that again, any homes constructed adjacent to the river or elsewhere in the development are reasonably protected from the river. Uh, phasing is something that we often talk about with preliminary plats as well. This project's a little bit unique. Its access will come off of Ninth South, another access through the River Cove development to the east. And we have just a little bit of other frontage on Ninth South that will be developed. Um, it's my understanding that the applicant, um, would prefer to perhaps escrow funds for those improvements there versus make those improvements, um, with the first phase of the project. Typically we require that, uh, with the first phase of a development. And that's something that I believe we as staff are very comfortable with, with the idea that it probably makes more sense to install those improvements over, well, in connection with a bigger project than just to do that, you know, maybe a hundred and fifty feet or so of frontage. And, and just, you know, create another situation here like what we have there. That being said, the development review committee and the planning commission have both, both, excuse me, both recommended that the proposed preliminary plat be reapproved.
Do you know when they're gonna start construction or are they gonna start right away?
I don't know, but I, I get the impression that they're pretty anxious to start, yeah.
So the first thing they'll have to do is remove that garbage and then?
And step one, yeah.
Step one. Okay.
Yeah, so like I mentioned, um, and I believe the image in the staff report shows this walkway or trail lining up now with the eastern boundary of the property here. Uh, we think that's best partly because we simply have an existing utility easement that runs along that property line. Nothing better to have on top of a utility easement than a trail that we can get in and, and access and so forth, so.
Dave, you mentioned this spot down here, that's right here, and escrowing those funds. Does that cover everything that was included in that February eleventh email that we received discussing? Do you remember seeing that email that talked about making sure that, um, when I heard South was widened type? Sorry to throw you on the spot. Does that ring a bell now?
Uh, it's quite probable I received it, I don't remember.
Okay.
So, is the idea just making sure that?
That's get esc- that gets escrowed.
Okay.
That way, see, Mayor?
So we'd simply, you know, have them design those improvements to the city standard. We'd do a cost estimate on those and, yeah, we'd, we'd provide those funds to the city. And we would likely then do the construction when we feel like the time's right, so.
But we're saying we'd like to add that as a, we're saying we'd like to add that as a condition of the reapproval to get those funds escrowed.
I don't see why they would be, it, there's no problem there, is there?
No, that's typically how we handle something like this.
That's why it's, it's probably better.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion. I'm so moved that we approve River Point preliminary plat reapproval.
With? With the, with the additional condition, there's six conditions listed, I think, on the, on the approval through the planning and zoning, or seven. Seven conditions listed there, but, but we want the plus escrow condition added on the language for that lot.
Just like you said.
Okay, so we, we want the condition of the escrow added on for that additional lot. Does that cover it?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, Skyline Business Park preliminary plat reapproval.
This plat was originally approved back in two thousand and twelve to help clean up an illegal subdivision. And we have now another property owner that would like to build on a, on a property that was included in that illegal subdivision. So in order for us to be able to approve that project, we need to have the preliminary plat re-approved or revested so that then the development review committee can approve a final plat that can be recorded to create the lot that this applicant would now like to build on. So this is essentially a code enforcement actions. And we think this is a step in the right direction. Incidentally, this is important, I believe, simply to make sure that a number of the included properties that don't have frontage on Main Street, like these back in here, they don't have any frontage currently on a public street, they're landlocked. So this plat helps us understand how eventually access might be provided to properties back as part of the development. Um, but it's a pretty unique situation where we're asking you to approve a plat that has several different property owners in it. And at this point in time, not necessarily all of them are at the table. Um, which is why frankly, I think it's somewhat important for the city to take a little bit of a long view perspective to make sure that, uh, again, as development proceeds of, of those lots, we're making some provisions to get utilities to other properties that are adjacent to them and landlocked so that they just don't become really big nuisances in the middle of our industrial district down the road. So that being said, uh, both the development review committee and planning commission have recommended that the proposed preliminary plat be reapproved.
Who is at the table, Dave? Just this, just the owner of this part of it?
Uh, somebody would like to build right here. So this, this approval of the night would, uh, pave the way, so to speak, for us approving a one lot subdivision right here to create that as a legal building lot. Then we'd approve a site plan and issue a building permit for that lot. So that's, uh, there's a lot of area included in the plat, but right now that's.
Just concerns the one lot.
That's really what this is for, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? I'd entertain a motion. Motion to approve the Skyline Business Park preliminary plat reapproval. Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Scopes. It's a little faster than you might, sorry. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, passes. Ordinance zero one dash sixteen requiring vehicles to be removed from public streets during a blizzard. Oh, remove operations.
You know, we've lost our experienced plow driver here retired. We're pretty concerned about his replacement, being able to do the job. Uh, so Public Works is requesting that we prohibit parking on streets during a snowstorm for forty-eight hours thereafter so we can get the streets plowed. As you can see from the photo, it was getting a little tight, uh, for a car on the other side, uh, the plow had a really hard time getting down the street. Uh, we don't want any more cars hit. Uh, it's been a lot of years since we've done that and we, we don't wanna do that again, so. Public Works, uh, feels pretty strongly about this. We do have a provision that says, uh, I think there's two provisions that are helpful. One of them says that if the streets plowed earlier than forty-eight hours at the discretion of Public Works Director, then they can park there earlier. The other thing is we have a really large storm, it's taking us longer than forty-eight hours and we allow the mayor to extend that. We'll post that on the FFCN and our webpage and, and, you know, the reverse and I want to get that word out.
Mine says seventy-two.
You got the old one. Chris changed it to forty-eight. Uh, Chris and Jamie, who's our streets superintendent, talked about that and felt that forty-eight would work. We, we felt the shorter the better.
Okay. And Junior, maybe you could talk, oh, it, it's in here, the violations and things of that.
Oh, it, it, you know, it's a good point. So we talked about, uh, at our January work session, but made this an administrative, uh, matter. And, uh, so rather than get a ticket if they want, they can get the administrative notice and pay a fee. That fee can be set in the annual budget or by resolution of council. The initial fee we're proposing is fifteen dollars, forty dollars and seventy-five dollars. Now this covers the whole parking section of the code, it's an entire chapter. And so not all of them are related to snow. That's why you see there that, uh, fifteen dollar violation, second is a forty dollar in the same year or snow removal season. So if it's something dealing with something other than snow, we would look at calendar year. For snow removal, we would look at from, you know, November to March, whenever that snow period is. So you see it goes fifteen, forty, seventy-five. Hopefully somebody will learn then, but if not, we propose to make it quite expensive, double it each time thereafter within the same year and start off in game with a new year.
I don't know if this is something you can speak to or, or Chris can, Junior, but, uh, that looks like on a regular street in a regular neighborhood. But our new streets with our LID program are how much, uh, how much skinnier from curb to curb than?
Four feet narrower.
So you imagine that picture being shrum- two foot on each side?
So, so the cross-section is the same width, but the asphalt width, so.
That's, they're not four feet narrower than that.
Is that the narrow?
This is one of those narrow streets.
We put the plow on a narrow street to show?
Yeah.
And you already hit the other car on the le- on the left side of the truck, so it's a.
Or it held it on.
Well, yeah, we did that one experience.
It's up on the front.
Do you have, Zira, see, this?
There you go. Come on, huh? You knew you wouldn't be able to come without one council meeting, get up, talk to us.
I was.
I know, we were trying, we almost made it, we just needed three more to go.
Yeah, I was really hoping. Uh, the, the main reason for this is so that our plows can more quickly plow all the streets. It wasn't necessarily the, the relatively few narrower streets that we have constructed. But even going through the blogs, everything, if we can clear the streets, we can plow so much quicker. Uh, otherwise you're slowing down a lot and, and, and it takes a lot more time. And there's a lot of hazards in plowing. If you can clear the cars off the road, then, uh, uh, that removes most of those hazards. And it's also a nice way to clear off the streets once in a while. Some of these cars have been there a long time, so.
So, just so everybody, this isn't for the whole winter, this is just each snowstorm.
Yeah, just only during a snowstorm. It's patternized of, uh, some successful ordinances in other cities. And it's just only when it makes sense to, to get the cars off the road and then it, it's fine the rest of the winter time.
All right, now what about the big, wide roads? Are you gonna go curb to curb if they move their cars off?
Well.
I'm just asking.
We, we, uh, we will focus on areas where we really need this first, uh, as far as enforcement goes.
Cause you know, the first person that's gonna come in and say, well, my, I got a humongous road and you're never gonna go to where I park anyway, so, you know.
Pretty strange.
Huh?
So, so we will, we will, um, make sure that this is enforced on, uh, up in the Oaks where we have steep slopes and it's really dangerous and maybe some of the narrower areas where it's, uh, where, where it makes sense is, is where we'll, uh, focus and where there's a problem.
And there isn't, there really isn't an intent or desire to, to give out fines, but rather just encourage compliance and, and help to make it, help make the roads cleaner and safer. So there's not really an emphasis on, on any revenue generation here at all.
We believe it'll mostly just be warnings.
Right.
Who's gonna do that?
So, so during a snowstorm, we have some engineering staff, some inspectors on the turnside.
Oh, okay, and then they'll notify Steve?
You.
Dwayne?
Yeah, typically you wouldn't, um, on a warning, but if, if you, it becomes a, a big problem, we really need to get out there and it's in a very dangerous area.
So essentially they're just gonna go around and put something on the car that says?
Put it on the antenna.
On the antenna, okay.
Uh, back to your question, Chad, that, that ordinance to authorize those that the person hasn't done yet, we'll do that with the broader scope to the whole thing. You felt it'd be okay, we're nearing the end of our winter season, our snow season this year. So hopefully, you know, by sometime this summer, we'll incorporate the, the broader administrative notice concept. And when we do that, then we'll, we'll adopt that, change it.
Mayor does have a side-by-side with Knobby Tires, maybe we give him a badge and stack the notices.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
So let, let's talk for a moment about the effectiveness of this. The, the ordinance right now, Junior, says this is effective twenty days after passage and publication.
That's state law.
Right, it's, thanks. It's conceivable that we'll have snowstorms this year.
But this, this isn't gonna really come into play unless we have some really late storms.
Which we hope for, right? Cause we want more snow in the snowpack. But our, our intent really isn't to do anything until next year so that we have time to educate, communicate to the residents.
That's a good idea. Thanks, Junior. Any other questions, comments, editorials?
I make a motion, we approve ordinance number zero one dash sixteen, requiring vehicles to be removed from public streets during snow removal operations.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. Since this is an ordinance, we'll do that by row call. Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
All right, ordinance oh two dash sixteen, changing the name of the shade tree commission to Urban Forest Board. All right, ordinance oh-two dash sixteen, changing the name of the Shade Tree Commission to Urban Forestry Board.
Thank you. You just explained what we're doing.
Any questions, comments, editorials?
I move, I move that we.
As little, the only change to the ordinance is the name.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion then.
I move that we approve ordinance two-da, two dash sixteen, changing the name of Shade Tree Commission to the Urban Forestry Board.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Largow, a second by Councilman Scobes. This is another roll call vote. Uh, Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Largow.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
That passes. Ordinance dash three dash, or oh-three dash sixteen, amending billing permit deposit requirements.
Thank you, mayor. So we take billing deposits. We often take, we issue billing permits. We often take a deposit to make sure that required improvements get put in. And then when those get put in, we refund that deposit. A lot of times that deals with landscaping, wanting to win, and you can't do this. We need the deposit to make sure it goes in later. When something like that comes up, it's maybe a minor thing. It's not really affecting the, the safety of the home or the, you know, the safe occupancy of the home. What we're finding is that some of these things, some of them might be ready to crack sidewalk. And people are moving in and they're not getting it done. It becomes really difficult. So what we're proposing here is that we clarify our ordinance a little bit and authorize the city to take that deposit to either do the improvement or to put the money into the general fund to save, build up for a bigger project. So, I mentioned the cracked sidewalk. It, it's kind of expensive to go out and replace a little section if you're doing the whole block. And it makes more sense. We, we wanna hold that money until we can do a little bit bigger project on some of those things. Wanted to give ourselves that option and also solve the problem of what we're gonna do with some money if it accumulates. And this just clarifies the intent, what that's to be used for, to make sure that all the improvements actually do get, get, whether it's the homeowner or the city that does that.
Any questions? Not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance zero-three dash sixteen, billing, amending the billing permit deposit requirements.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilman Men, or Gordon. This is another roll call vote. Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Largow.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
That passes.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you for everyone that was here.